Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Monday, September 21st. We'll begin with the salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, into the republic.
The wishes stand.
One nation, under God, indivisible, where delivered in justice for all.
All right, thank you. Here we are again with another virtual meeting. We had some technical difficulties getting started. We have a lot of land development items on our agenda tonight. Um, there will be a few changes to our agenda, just the order. And we'll, you know, I'll talk to them through as we get to them. But I will start with item number one. Oh, well, first with the call the roll, right? Pulling, or I guess Mr. Rocco.
I'll call it. Uh, Brian Galloway.
Here.
Jeff Baraski.
Here.
Jeff Dent.
Here.
John Palmer.
Here.
John Palmer.
All right, we're back on track now. I'm sorry. Um, item number one is public comment. I know we have Tony Batiste holding. Are you there, Tony?
Coming in now.
Yes, I am, Jeff. Sorry, I have to wait till I'm moved.
That's all right.
Okay, um, yes, uh, first off, I would like to make sure that we do have in writing that Elcon is withdrawing their lawsuit.
We don't, there's, the lawsuit's withdrawn, it's, it's over. There's nothing else with Elcon. We don't, we don't need anything in writing, I don't believe. I mean, we didn't get a notice, we just know that they withdrew the the court case, correct, Mr. Clark?
That is correct. It's, uh, it's been marked as, uh, as ended up in Doylestown.
Okay, um, US Steel remediated a large amount of land for their newspaper notice, and how does Falls Township determine that this was actually done? And if it's safe to actually build there?
Excuse me, can you repeat that last part?
And if it's safe to build there? How do we determine that?
Is this the same one that we discussed last meeting, or is this a new one?
Um, I think it's a new one because it was in the newspaper, oh, I think about three weeks ago.
Okay, this is the one we emailed about. This is the same, this is the same thing. It's something that they did years ago, probably, that they just never finished up with the DEP. So whatever they restored, uh, is between them and the DEP. We really don't have any regulation over that? Is that correct, Mr. Clark?
That, that is correct. Uh, DEP has jurisdiction over any of the remediation that they're required to do, uh, based on all of the permits that they've had down there. And DEP will be the ones who will certify that the remediation has been done properly and that something can go on the property that they've remediated.
Okay, thank you. Again, I'm asking about the curbing for Fallington. Uh, United Methodist Church, because in October 10th, they're gonna have Fallington Day. So if we're going to do it soon, it really needs to be done before Fallington Day, otherwise it needs to wait till after.
Right, everything's still way behind schedule. We'll make sure that they coordinate if it's even on their agenda for before October 10th and make sure it doesn't happen until after.
I'm pretty sure they, Fallington Day.
Uh, one question, and that is when we have these items on for the different, um, preliminary and final land development issues. There's nothing that actually tells us what, what they're going to do. Like, is it gonna be manufacturing? Is it gonna be recycling? Is it gonna be waste? And I know it's gonna be too lengthy to put in the item numbers, but when they have their little presentation that's on the website, could they include like a notice on there, what kind of business they're planning to run?
Um, yeah, usually, I guess when they do the presentation, it's pretty clear, but we'll make sure that we'll put something in a headline or a title or something like that moving forward. Mr. Tequita, you can take care of that?
Yes, here we provide a, a, one sentence, uh, item on what they're proposing. If, if they provide it, yes.
Because right now, especially with the Zoom, a lot of times if I want to ask questions, questions, they just go right past and say, hey, nobody wants to, but how do you know? Because I'm still here listening, waiting. And something came.
Log on, Tony, I guess, do you not get my emails when I respond to you? Cause you don't respond to my responses. And I only say that because I, the last two times we corresponded, I, she gave you the contact info so that you can log on just like we are right now and you'll be able to comment on any agenda item that's on here.
Okay, I think I didn't get that, so I'll have to go back and check.
I'll, I'll send you one directly tomorrow, but I, I don't know how you can do it now.
Okay, that's fine. There's just a couple I want to ask about, and I already told them which ones, so.
All right.
Hopefully that'll be good.
Yep, all right. Is that it?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good night. Is there anyone else for a public comment, Kyle?
No more public comment.
All right, then move this on to item number two. Uh, item number two was a public hearing for a towing company that allegedly violated um, our ordinance. There was a hearing held between, uh, the manager, Matt Tequita, and our solicitor's office and Mrs. Gallagher. Do you want to take it from here?
Certainly. There was a hearing held on August 26, 2020, regarding alleged violations of the Falls Township, Chapter 206, uh, which relates to the duty towers in the township. Um, Mr. Tequita and I did review all of the evidence, and I believe Mr. Tequita is prepared to make a recommendation for the board's consideration this evening.
All right, and that recommendation is, Mr. Tequita?
We're recommending that the board, um, require a formal, uh, warning letter be issued to Hackett's Towing, notifying them that any further violations of the code will result in further sanctions, including but not limited to the revocation of the wrecker's license, and also that Hackett's, uh, be directed to refund the amount of the overcharges.
All right. That's the recommendation. I guess we're gonna vote on that. Mr., uh, do we have a motion to approve, uh, Matt's recommendation?
I make that motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All right, a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that was easy. Then number three is our first land development, Alro Steel Preliminary and Final Land Development, 17 Progress Drive. Um, Mr. Clark, you want to take us through this, or Ms. Gallagher?
Uh, Ms. Gallagher will take you through this, and I think we have, we may have to let some people in, uh, for this one.
Evening.
Mr. McGinnis, do you have, um, anyone else with you tonight?
Um, I think the John, Adam, Sarah with Greg, and I have Kristen. I think we have everybody. Thank you.
Great. Uh, this evening, this is an application for preliminary and final land development for Arlo Steel at 17 Progress Drive. Uh, Mr. McGinnis, if you could, uh, present summaries of the testimony that, uh, your various witnesses would, uh, give and ask them to confirm that testimony and then offer yourself and your witnesses, um, for any additional questioning from the board, I will turn it over to you.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, Mike McGinnis from Begley Carlin here on behalf of Alro Steel, just to provide a, a brief summary to the board of what we're here for tonight. Um, my client owns, uh, two parcels at the northwest corner of Steel and Progress Drive. Um, the property is presently vacated, is located in the heavy industrial district. And part of the project is to consolidate those two parcels into one larger tract comprising approximately 14.63 acres. We appeared in front of the zoning hearing board in December, were granted two variances. Um, and just to provide a little bit more background, this is a, actually a three-phase project with the final product being the construction of an approximately 254,699 square foot building for warehouse distribution. Uh, and within that building, there's an approximately 10,744 square foot office. Uh, we can break down the phases, um, if the board would like that, but uh, essentially the first phase is the construction of 157,298 square feet. Uh, by the end of the second phase, the structure would be up to approximately 197,491 square feet. And by the conclusion of the third phase, we'd be at approximately 254,699 square feet. And then I would just note preliminarily that even though this is phased, uh, the stormwater is all going to be installed in Phase 1 and calculated for the full build. And then just to provide a bit of background about Alro, and, um, we do have, uh, Greg Ansell. Uh, I believe John Rummler and Adam Schmidt are here on Alro's behalf. They've been in business for over 70 years. Uh, Alro processes and distributes metals, plastics, and industrial supplies with next-day delivery to over 25,000 customers in North America. And I would note that the only real processing, uh, that occurs for this site, um, would be bulk cutting to the client's request prior to shipping. Alro has, uh, 70 sites in 12 states. And I made this note at the Planning Commission, but I think I would be prudent to reiterate it to the board. Alro is not a, uh, proposed lessee, they're not an equitable owner. Uh, they're committed to Falls Township. They purchased this property, and I know Alro's intent is to be a, a strong partner in the community for the long run. Um, we certainly hope, uh, with this job, we're gonna be adding a good number of, uh, local uh, employees to the area after construction. And I'm happy to go through, um, the phasing, and I say Kristen Holmes this year to discuss more about the technical aspects of the project, or we can go through, um, the five waiver requests or handle this however the, uh, board would like. We've reviewed, um, Joe Jones' letter, and, uh, whatever the board's pleasure is, we'll address it.
Um, let's just go through the waiver request to start, I think, and then we'll see if we have any questions from the board.
Sure. So, the first waiver request is from Section 191, uh, 36D to not provide curbing on private driveways. Um, there's a note in, uh, Mr. Jones' review letter that states at a minimum, curbing must be provided from the street line to the radi terminus of each industrial driveway, and we are, uh, doing that. The second waiver request is from 191, 37B, uh, to not require curbing along all parking facilities, and I will just note in addition, we are providing guardrail. Uh, the third waiver request is from 191, 37G, 1 through 4, which is a waiver from providing, um, curved raised planting beds around off-street parking and loading areas at intervals not exceeding 20 spaces. The fourth waiver is from 191, 45C, and, uh, Kristen, if you could just very briefly jump in with this, since it applies to stormwater, I think that would be helpful explaining that waiver request.
Sure. This is a waiver request to allow multiple stormwater structures within the existing drainage easement. So there is an existing drainage easement that runs along the frontage of the property along Progress Drive. It's an existing drainage ditch which carries runoff from upstream properties within Progress Drive and then discharges that into the street storm system. So as part of the proposal for the project, we are proposing onsite stormwater facilities to handle the runoff that would discharge into that drainage ditch, which is the low point of the property. So there would be multiple structures as far as outfall pipes from each of the BMPs. The, uh, there's an infiltration trench and two infiltration basins that each have an outlet pipe discharging into this easement area.
Thanks, Kristen. Uh, and the final waiver is from 191, 78C2, and that's an existing features waiver. We are providing survey information within the existing boundaries. Uh, everything else in the review letters are all, will comply.
Yeah, mute.
I'm sorry, including the fire marshal's concerns.
Correct.
Okay, uh, Mr. Jones, do you have any comments on the waiver requests?
No comments. They are all typical waivers that, um, the board has approved in the past, and the multiple store instructions are simply concrete end walls.
All right, uh, any questions from board members? Mr. Baraski?
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Uh, no, I, I know, uh, you did make mention, um, you were talking about bringing in jobs and phases. Can you go elaborate on that a little bit more, and what type of jobs are you planning on creating?
Sure. Uh, I don't know if Greg or Adam or John, you wanna, wanna jump in in terms of the type of employees we're seeking to add here, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'll jump in. I'll jump in on that. Uh, typically, what, what we would have is, we're gonna have primarily, um, warehouse positions that are gonna be open. There's also gonna be, uh, there's gonna be some administrative staff, like a general manager, you're gonna have a superintendent in the warehouse. You're gonna have some other managerial positions like in, inside sales managers and the like, and there's gonna be some operations managers. Um, as far as the phases go, typically, we're gonna have somewhere from, you know, I'm just saying some round numbers, but 35 to 50 employees to start. And when we're at full operation, we could probably have anywhere from 75 to 100 employees. So I don't know if you need a higher level of detail than that, but that's just.
No, that's fine. Thank you so much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Is that it, Mr. Palmer?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Rocco?
No, the waivers are all typical for this area, so I'm fine with it.
Mr. Galloway, any concerns or questions?
No concerns or questions, thank you.
All right, I have none. Mine have been all been answered. Um, anything else from Mrs. Gallagher? Ms. Gallagher?
No, there's nothing else from the board. Um, I believe that, uh, just if there's any public comment, would be appropriate.
Kyle, do we have any public comment for this item?
No comment.
All right, um, and this is a resolution. Do we know what resolution number this is, Mr. Tequita?
Yes, it's, uh, Resolution 2020 dash 22.
All right, is there a motion for, uh, Alro Steel, Resolution Number 2020, 8222?
I make the motion to approve.
I'll second it, thank you.
All right, motion made and seconded. Mr. Rocco, can you poll the board?
Brian Galloway.
Yes.
Jeff Baraski.
Yes.
Jeff Dent.
Yes.
John Palmer.
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Excellent. Congratulations. Thank you and welcome to Falls Township.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck, all.
Give a, a minute to get these guys cleared out, and next item number four is our second prelimi-, uh, preliminary and final land development for Empire Sunshine Paper Company Keystone Industrial Port Complex. And, um, I guess we're gonna give them a minute to get a few folks in for this one. Are we all set?
Yes.
All right, Lauren, you want to take your.
Certainly. This is an application submitted by Empire Sunshine Paper for preliminary and final land development approval this evening. Uh, the applicant is represented by Kelly McGowan. Uh, Ms. McGowan, if you could give us a summary of each of your witnesses' uh, testimony in front of the board, and then offer yourself and your witnesses for any questioning from the board, I will turn it over to you. And you are muted.
Yeah, need to unmute.
That is always a good start, board members. Good evening, how are you? Uh, Kelly McGowan, representing, uh, Empire Sunshine Fiber, USS Real Estate. Uh, Ms. Gallagher, thank you very much for the introduction. This is a preliminary final land development application for the development of a portion of property located, uh, in the KIPC. Uh, actually has three road frontages, uh, is comprised of 33 acres. Um, frontage on Energy Drive, uh, Sorrels Boulevard, as well as, uh, Center. We received zoning hearing board approval, uh, for two variances, uh, each to permit an encroachment in, uh, one of the front yards of this property earlier this year. Uh, we have been through two reviews, uh, in front of your, um, township engineer and have the most recent letter dated September 9th. Uh, this proposal is for a just under 300,000 square foot, uh, recycle market pulp mill manufacturing facility, which is effectively a recycling facility. Uh, with me this evening is Mr. Jim Austin. Uh, Jim is, uh, representative of the applicant. He is the CEO and President of Empire Recycled Fiber LLC, which is a member, uh, of the applicant entity. Uh, also have with me this evening, uh, Mr. Bob Showalter and Dr. Labub Shabani, who are the engineers, um, on the project. Uh, we have requested, uh, certain waivers from the board. I'm happy to go through those waivers at this time. Um, all of the waivers are, uh, standard and customary. Uh, they have been through, again, as I said, we've been through two review processes. Um, the most recent letter, uh, from Jones Engineering is a will comply. Uh, the first, uh, waiver that we're requesting, um, is from the section of the ordinance requiring 15 feet of open space between a curb line of a parking area and the proposed building. Uh, we are proposing parking in proximity to the building. Uh, we have also designed this site with stormwater management, um, in mind, and that has driven some of the curbing. Our engineers have had specific, uh, conversations with Mr. Jones with respect to the locations of those improvements. Uh, the second waiver, uh, is a waiver from the provision requiring parking space rows to be less than or equal to 20 parking spaces. And again, the same comment, uh, that all parking islands be curbed. Again, um, attention has been given on the plan to parking areas for both employees and the anticipated trucks. And again, for stormwater management with respect to curbing. Uh, third waiver, uh, is from the section of the ordinance requiring one shade tree for each of the required planting beds. Um, that is somewhat self-explanatory. This is actually a property that is, uh, burdened with, uh, an area of resources. Um, the central canal area, which you may be familiar with within the KIPC. Um, all of the improvements, again, have been designed in order to preserve, uh, that area and, uh, including areas of, existing areas of vegetation. Uh, the next, uh, request is similar, required number of shade trees within the parking area. Uh, the next waiver is, um, one relating to the grading, and that is to permit uh, slopes of greater than five feet, uh, from the property lines. And this is due to grading of improvements that's required, um, in proximity to the lease lines of this property. Uh, the next waiver is a partial waiver, uh, requiring that no permanent structure be permitted to be placed within the area of an easement. Again, this is a property that is subject to various easements, uh, in this location in the KIPC. Uh, both to the benefit of USS Real Estate as well to the adjacent Dominion property. Uh, we are working with, uh, the property owner and Dominion, um, for the location of those improvements. Uh, the next waiver, uh, is, um, a similar waiver to what we discussed before, somewhat duplicative, that is requiring street trees along all property frontages. Uh, the next waiver is for steep slope disturbance, and that's within existing stormwater basins that are proposed for enlargement. We are intending and, uh, utilizing existing stormwater management facilities and improving those facilities in order to manage the stormwater from the proposed improvements on the property. Uh, the next waiver, um, is again a curbing waiver, curbing and widening along the streets that front on this land development. Again, these are private roads in the KIPC. There are three frontages, and we are not proposing any improvement to those roads, um, nor believe it's required in connection with this development. And the final, uh, waiver is one you're familiar with, and it's a partial waiver from, uh, showing existing features within 200 feet. This is a partial waiver. All information will be shown to the satisfaction of the township engineer. Um, we are, uh, again, it's a will comply comments in agreement with providing an O and M agreement for the stormwater. There are no additional stormwater management comments relating, uh, we've worked through all of those issues at this time. Uh, I would ask the board, uh, if you have any questions, uh, for me, either of the engineers or for Mr. Austin.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Jones, any comments on these waivers?
No objections to the waivers, Mr. Chairman.
And, uh, I did see the fire marshal's letter. You'll comply with that as well?
That is correct.
All right, what about the letter from the Shade Tree Commission? You're asking for a waiver for all the trees? You're not gonna be planting any trees?
Um, we may be planting additional trees. Uh, we don't have that landscape plan, um, and are requesting the waiver from compliance with the street tree requirements. As I said, one of the road frontages is the central canal where there's already vegetation. It would not be possible to meet those strict, um, we, requirements of the ordinance and compliance doesn't mean they're not going to be planting, though.
All right, we'll follow up on that, then I guess, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
All right, um, any questions from board members? Mr. Rocco?
Yeah, I was wondering if Mr. Lewis can, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Austin can talk us through, um, the process. How does it all work? Um, what, what are you?
My question, what exactly you guys are gonna be doing down there?
I'd be glad to. Um, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, Empire Recycled Fiber is being designed using mechanical technology to basically process old corrugated containers and mixed paper into conventional market pulp. Um, this is a conventional commodity that's used as the basic raw material to manufacture, uh, recycled paper. Um, there's been currently a drastic change in the export capabilities of moving wastepaper into the Chinese market in particular, but also other Asian markets, uh, precluding the US from exporting millions of tons a year. We've basically identified this as an opportunity to address the subsequent void in the mid-Atlantic US regional market to basically replace that export market by buying that recycled fiber here, processing it here through very much of a mechanical, uh, process, and then exporting a product that does qualify for export into those Asian markets. The company is, uh, using state-of-the-art proven technology that's used in multiple plants around the world. Uh, the company itself will process 500,000 tons a year of wastepaper. Those contracts are with companies like Waste Management, Waste Connections, Republic, and multiple other companies, most of which are regional recycling, um, wastepaper processing companies that basically pick up our green buckets, uh, every week. Um, once operational, um, it'll take us approximately 17 months to build the plant. Um, the total revenue on the company will be in the neighborhood of 135, 140 million dollars a year. We currently anticipate hiring 200 to 250, um, individuals to build the plant over a 17 to 18 month timeline. Once commercially operational, uh, we will begin a ramp-up of hiring the initial, um, senior management of the company, um, technical people, process engineers. At the time of commercial operation, at the end of that 17-month period, we would have a total employment of 110 people on staff, full-time employees. Um, approximate payroll on that group is 6.2 million dollars a year. Company's intent is to obviously hire local educated, English-speaking people that have an ethics of high work, um, considerations. It's a, a project that we're frankly very, very proud of. The approval process has been phenomenal here in the community, and we're really looking forward to being, being a strong member and a part of this community. Yeah, yeah, answer any questions?
Uh, no, that was a great explanation. Um, so 17 months is the timeline, you think? Once you get shovels in the ground?
That's correct. We, uh, we currently have a, um, bond cap allocation from the Commonwealth through 160 million dollars. This is a solid waste, um, processing facility. Subsequently, the financing of the project is using non-recourse, tax-exempt municipal bond financing strategy. The company will put up the equity required to basically, uh, meet the financing requirements. The senior debt is Commonwealth municipal tax-exempt bonds.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Rocco?
No, appreciate the summary. Good luck.
Mr. Baraski?
Yeah, um, thank you. That was, that was a great summary, actually, Mr. Austin. Um, I liked the backdrop too behind you.
I'm actually in that office right now.
That's great, I've been there. Um, I was just kinda curious if you can talk about a little bit about, you know, um, the transportation of the recycled product. you know, the transportation of the recycled product in and out, maybe?
One of the, one of the real advantages of this location and part of the reason we're here, go back to the historical design of the KIPC properties. The fact that we can bring in sixty to seventy truckloads of waste paper a day and bring those into the site without passing a residential home is one of the key elements of why this site made so much sense for us. The export or the movement of the finished product is being designed with two strategies in mind. We will be shipping sixty containers of pulp out of the plant every day. The intent is to move those containers. Two options, they will either be trucked to Port of Newark and put on export container ships, or they will be loaded on a barge here at the KIPC site. The barge will then be transported to the port of Norfolk, Virginia, and would then be shipped to China on a container ship. Frankly, we have worked hard to try and address the movement via the barge to Norfolk, Virginia. It's our intent to try and reduce the CO2 emissions on those tractor trailers going back and forth to Newark, New Jersey. It's a cost-efficient way to move the volume. We've worked very, very hard with Kinder Morgan, people that are currently in the barge transportation business to solidify that strategy, and we're frankly negotiating one of those contracts right now. But the beauty of the site is that we do not have to pass a residence coming and going from this property.
I appreciate it. Sounds like, you know, between, you know, employees and our community and transportation in and out, you know, you really put a lot of thought behind, you know, the residents here. So I do appreciate that I am one of them houses that you would be coming past. So thank you for that.
You're more than welcome. It's, it's the only way, the only way to run a business if you don't have to impact local residents. And obviously, it is a tax base and an opportunity to employ good, hard-working people.
That's all I have. Thanks, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, I know you touched base on it, Mr. Dents, about the, the trees, the waiver for, well, actually, the street trees and then, like, what is it? One ninety-one point three seven and one ninety-one point four eight. If they're not going to, or if they're not going to use the trees, maybe they can donate them to the Shade Tree Commission so we can use it throughout the township somewhere else.
I, I'd be more than happy to entertain that, that idea. At this point, the people that, that I report to, that is majority owners of the company, operate facilities like this in China. Having visited those facilities, I can tell you that the chairman and the majority owner of that company has basically challenged us with making this facility to look as beautiful as his. There are, if you can believe it, koi ponds and gorgeous trees and walkways that surround his paper mill. And that's my challenge. So there may be gruff and scrub planted on that canal today. Something tells me that two years from now, we're all going to be very proud of what this site looks like. And we've been happy to sit down with the community and thinking to figure out a way to, to help improve the, the view shed in this area.
Koi pond sounds interesting. Is that it, Mr. Palmer?
Thank you.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions. It, it just sounds great and good luck to your company. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Yeah, two hundred construction jobs and then over a hundred permanent jobs is great. I guess, any other questions, Mr. Jones? No? Anyone else? Is there any public comment needed? Kyle?
Yes, we have one.
All right. Motion to open public comment?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Do you have, who we have, Kyle?
Tony should be in the room.
All right, Tony, are you there? I think you're muted.
Tony, star six on mute, please. Tony, can you please hit star six to unmute?
Kyle, I think you can unmute her as well.
Yeah, we're, we can't necessarily totally unmute. We have to request it.
Tony, if you can hear me, you have to hit star six on your phone to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Tony.
Okay, just a couple of questions. I don't know if any of you are familiar with Spring Grove. It's a small town north of Hanover, and it was about half hour from my hometown when I lived there. And you could smell it if the wind blew in the right direction at my house a half hour away. They processed paper. So what I want to know is, is there a smell involved? Because it was a really horrendous cesspool smell.
Good evening, Tony. The company referring to is PH Gladfelter in Spring Grove, Pennsylvania. That facility operates a craft market pulp and paper manufacturing facility. They're basically using trees. They're bringing the trees in, they're chipping the trees, and they're putting it through a cooking process using a combination of three or four different chemicals. And it's the burn off of those chemicals that is creating a, an odor, very similar to rotten eggs, is how I'd best describe it. I can, I can certainly tell you and attest to the fact, and frankly, I'd be more than delighted to take you to a facility very similar to the one that we're designing and building here. And you would be surprised to know that you could actually be sitting in the parking lot of this plant. And the only reason you would know it's running is because there's a lot of cars in the parking lot and that there is steam coming off some of the vents on the roof of the facility. You won't hear it running, you won't smell anything being generated and anything that looks like a molderer's odor. And I'd be more than happy to make arrangements to take you to similar facilities that are recycling using a mechanical process of waste paper treatment versus the chemical pulp odor that you experienced in Spring Grove, Pennsylvania.
It's still there. Okay, another question then is, I saw on your plans that there is a section for pulp dryers.
That's correct.
At some point, you're going to be making it wet. Where is that going?
I, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll try and describe the, the manufacturing process to you. The dry fiber comes into the plant in bales. Those bales are put on a conveyor and are put into a hydropulver, which is basically hot water at a hundred and ten, a hundred and twelve degrees Fahrenheit. There is a blender at the bottom of the, the hydropulver that basically agitates and breaks up the cellulose fiber and begins to allow us to then subsequently put the material through the OCC processing line itself. It's in that process that we're removing any of the contaminants, tapes, styrofoam, plastics, things of that nature that have no paper manufacturing quality. Those materials represent about four to five percent of our feedstock and are basically sorted out of the line and go into what's called a trash dumpster. That material is compressed to forty-five to fifty percent solids and put into a container that would ultimately be transported to a landfill for disposal. There is another ten or fifteen percent of our feedstock that falls into what is referred to in the industry as short fiber residuals. These are fibers that have been through the recycling process three or four or five times. They have lost their hydrogen bonding characteristics and are no longer adequate and strong enough to manufacture paper. We separate those out of our system. We put those into two other side collection systems where they are compressed, compacted. That material is then also used in the landfill industry as daily cover. Companies like Waste Management and others in a region that run landfills have to cover the garbage that comes into the plant every day. In order to do that, they normally source topsoil. The material I'm referring to is called short fiber residuals. It's an ideal daily cover. And we have an agreement with Waste Management to take that material, truck it the mile and a half up to the current landfill and any other landfills that they may own in the region, and use it as daily cover. The balance of all of the material that comes into the plant, that as we dry the material, we compress it, first of all, in a series of pressing rolls to drive out water, and then we dry it. The finished product goes into the pulp dryer that you referred to, and it's taken down to ten percent moisture, ninety percent, and then shipped to our customer overseas. The effluent, the water side of the process, goes into a wastewater treatment plant where we're basically taking it through two different anaerobic and aerobic wastewater treatment systems. We're basically removing any of the solids that are inside of that material, and it becomes sludge that would then also have to be landfilled. The water that is left in the system is taken down to a twenty parts per billion level of purity. We will then either direct discharge to the Mooresville Municipal Wastewater Treatment Plant, or we will discharge to the US Steel existing Delaware River Discharge Facility. In either case, we realize that we have an obligation to maintain the purity of that water discharge, and it's an obligation and it is, and is in the design parameters of our plant so that the effluent we generate will be treated prior to discharging. The solids, we obviously will dry and discharge to municipal landfills. Did that clarify your question, Tony?
Yes, and that sludge will not be smelly either, right?
No, it, it's, it's one of the, it's a, it's a material that you, you wouldn't want to be putting it in your driveway because over time, it begins to, if you just let it sit in your backyard for months on end, there's a potential of it obviously creating a bacteria that would itself be the odor. It wouldn't be the fiber, it would be the bacteria that would grow in it. So it's important to turn it, and that becomes the, the obligation of the company to, and again, from an operational standpoint, it's essential we move it every day. This is a plant that'll run twenty-four, seven. It goes down for five or six, seven days during the course of the year, but it's essential that the systems run constantly. So we would be moving this material off-site every day.
Okay, thank you.
You're more than welcome. Jeff, you're on mute.
Thank you. I guess that's it for Tony. All right, motion to close public comment?
So moved, so moved.
All right, all in favor? Aye? All right, I guess there's no more questions. I assume this is resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-three, Mr. Tequita?
That's correct.
All right, so we've heard the presentation. Is there a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty hyphen twenty-three?
I move to approve the resolution.
I'll second it.
All right, motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, congratulations and welcome to Falls Township.
Thank you very, very much, ladies and gentlemen. Look forward to working with you. Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item, item number five. Another land development, Marquee Construction, preliminary and final land development. All set? Mr. McGinnis is back?
Back.
All right. You want to just take us through what exactly you guys are doing? We don't have to go through all these waivers again. I think we're good with this one?
Sure, certainly. Thank you. So I, I believe some of the board members probably know Bob Marquis. We're here for his property, two sixty-one Lower Mooresville Road and one point four five acre tract. The property currently has a twenty-eight hundred forty-three square foot contractor's office with a seventeen hundred seventy-four square foot accessory building. And what we're doing is constructing a fourteen thousand one hundred sixty-five square foot addition, which is going to be used primarily for maintenance and storage of equipment. That equipment is really currently being stored in the exterior of the property. So we think this is going to be a substantial improvement for the property in its current condition, and it's a site that's mostly covered with gravel presently. There's no change to the operation, there's no functional impact, there's no additional employees, so we're not talking about a job that's going to add any additional traffic. So there isn't any concern with respect to the roadway. And I would just note that, you know, this is Bob's own property, so he's going to take special care to make sure everything's done properly. And the one, one note I would add with the waivers is we are in touch with the neighbor to the west of the property who's provided a letter in our packet submission to the township indicating that there's no objection with respect to work being done within five feet of the property line. Other than that, it's, I think it's fairly straightforward.
It seems very straightforward. Mr. Jones, do you have any questions or issues with any of the waivers requested?
We do not.
And yeah, you'll comply with the Fire Marshal's letter?
That's correct, yes.
All right. I'll take questions from board members. Mr. Rocco?
I have none, thank you.
Mr. Borowski?
I have none, thank you. Good luck with the project.
Mr. Palmer?
I have none.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Yeah, this is about as straightforward as we can get. And this is done by resolution as well. So this is resolution number twenty twenty hyphen twenty-four, Mr. Tequita, is that correct?
Yeah.
All right. I guess that's it. Any other, is there any public comment needed, Kyle?
No public comment.
All right, is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
All right. Made and seconded. All, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right, that was pretty easy, Mr. Marquis.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you. Have a great night. Appreciate it.
All right.
Wish we were all that easy.
Me too. Have a good night.
All right, that takes us to item number six, Pensbury School Board waiver of land development.
Let me just, I can start. My name is Leannick Lubrill with Remington Vernic Engineers. Also here is Peter Medica with Bonnet Associates. They're the architect for the project. We are here on behalf of the Pensbury School District who's proposing a approximately seven hundred and sixty-five square foot building addition at the existing administration building located at one thirty-four Yardley Avenue. The addition contains a new entryway as well as a elevator to create an ADA accessible entrance to the building there. Additional handicap parking is proposed as well as landscape buffering around the parking areas. The addition is being constructed on the existing parking surface, so there's no increased impervious surfaces. There should be no stormwater concerns. We are requesting three waivers. The first one is from section one ninety-one forty-eight, partial waiver requiring street trees along the property lines, the property frontages. We're proposing buffer landscaping around the parking area, so we hope that that satisfies that. The second waiver is from section one ninety-one sixty-one A, which is a partial waiver from requiring sidewalks be constructed along the streets. And the third waiver is section one ninety-one seventy-eight C two, which is a partial waiver from requiring the existing features to be shown within two hundred feet of the property. We are able to comply with the Jones Engineering Review Letter and any other consultant review letter that we received. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, this is another one that's pretty straightforward. Mr. Jones, I assume you have no issue with any of the waiver requests?
We have no issue.
We have no issue with the waiver request.
Yeah, even the shade tree commission was okay with it, and that's a rare one. And the Fire Marshal had no questions. Any questions from board members, Mr. Rocco?
No, thank you.
Palmer?
No.
Mr. Galloway?
No, thank you.
And Mr. Boraski?
No questions.
Yeah, I have none. This is pretty straightforward. In Fallsington, is there any public comment needed, Kyle?
No public comment.
And this is resolution 2020-25, Mr. Tequita?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, a motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, another easy one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. And we're going to make a slight change here from item number seven. We're going to skip ahead to what's listed as item number 19, which is another land development project. This is an ordinance amending the provisions of the RD1 Riverfront District zoning. Can you take us through this, Ms. Gallagher?
Certainly, and I believe that there are several individuals for the, on behalf of the applicant for this matter that are coming into the room now. This is an applicant, an application to rezone or to amend the provisions of the RD1 Riverfront District as set forth in the ordinance. This ordinance was advertised, consisted with the municipality's planning code on September 8th and September 14th. And the property that is associated with the application was also posted on September 14th. The applicant tonight is represented by Rob Gunlock of Fox Rothschild. So Rob, I will turn it over to you for the, for the text amendment change request.
Thank you. Rob Gunlock, attorney for the applicant, Stallworth Equities. Here with me from Stallworth is Samuel Waxman. Samuel is the president of the company. Also Chris Regal and Yosef Portnoy from Mazur Engineering and Jeff Fjor from Mazur, the traffic engineer. By way of brief background, the property that's proposed to be redeveloped, commonly referred to as the Savoy Property, approximately 85 acres along South Pennsylvania Avenue and the Delaware River. Currently on the site now are remnants of the prior buildings and one or two small remaining buildings. The client also has purchased two parcels on South Pennsylvania Avenue to widen the driveway entrance and also a portion of the Rogers foam parcel on Post to provide a secondary or emergency access to the property. Stallworth is proposing a 973,000 square foot warehouse building on the property. It would contain approximately 60,000 square feet of office space and would be occupied by one or multiple users. It is located in the RD1 district. I would characterize the area surrounding this property as containing a number of industrial type of uses. And we are here to request an amendment to the RD1 ordinance to allow the warehouse use. We have reviewed the proposed text amendment with township staff. We've incorporated comments and recommendations by staff. We have also reviewed it with Morrisville Borough. Obviously, this property is located in Falls Township, not Morrisville Borough, but it does butt up against Post Road, which is the borderline to Morrisville Borough. They had expressed some concerns regarding truck traffic. We reviewed with Morrisville Borough representatives how we intend to orient all of the truck traffic away from the borough. And Jeff can comment further on that. By Tyburn Road will be our primary access to and from South Pennsylvania Avenue. We also agree to assist the borough with an ordinance that they're trying to get passed by PennDOT to limit the truck traffic on Main Street there. And they call it South Pennsylvania Avenue to North Pennsylvania Avenue, but their main drag. So the trucks go around from Philadelphia to Tyburn. That was all recommended by all the traffic consultants. And we're going to help the system with signage and potentially an ordinance amendment there. So that's the, that's the summary of what we're proposing. We have with us engineers and traffic consultants to address any of your comments. Obviously, this is the first step in the process. If this text amendment was approved, we would then proceed to full land development plans. We'd be working with your planning commission and township staff on those plan sets. And then at some point appear back here before the board for further discussion as to the project.
Okay. And Ms. Gallagher, just to be clear, all we're doing is changing the zoning text amendment, right? We're not actually approving any plans or anything like that tonight.
That's correct. This matter will come back. If the text amendment is approved, it will come back in front of the board for land development approval. If it is not approved, then the applicant will have to determine whether or not to go to zoning.
And can you quickly have someone explain to us how you're going to control the truck traffic? I mean, I understand that it's just going to go down back north on Pennsylvania or east, I guess it would be, to Tyburn. That's the only way they can go. Basically, trash trucks in Falls Township already. So I don't think it would be that difficult to do. More, more, not so much the truck traffic. How are you going to control traffic on Post Road going through Morrisville? It's traffic that's not truck traffic to appease the people in Morrisville, the folks down there.
Sure. Good, good questions. And I'm going to call Jeff in to respond. But we did submit some exhibits to you. And one of them that is worthwhile to pull up on the screen if we can do so, we call it the Truck Circulation Plan that we have in our package here. I don't know if we can, whoever's controlling the screen, if you can pull that plan up first. And then we have another plan to show you. But in essence, all of the trucks leaving the site, Mr. Chairman, will be directed to make a left out of the site. On Pennsylvania Avenue, trucks will be prohibited from using Post Road. Post Road will serve only for passenger vehicles or emergency access, depending upon discussions in land development. So all the trucks will be forced to make a left out to Pennsylvania and then to Tyburn. Jeff, why don't you elaborate a little further about that? And then we'll talk about some of the discussions with Morrisville Borough and what we agreed to do to help them with their existing issues with truck traffic.
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. Again, Jeff Fjor with Mazur Consulting. This is an exhibit, I believe we presented to you back in June when we came here before the Board of Supervisors the first time to kind of just introduce the project. What we're doing is the truck route to and from the site is intended to be from Route 13 and to use Tyburn Road all the way to South Pennsylvania Avenue and then turn in at the main access along South Pennsylvania Avenue. There is a brake retardation ordinance in place already in Morrisville, but it's not a truck restriction in place. So what we're looking to do is essentially work with Morrisville to provide a truck restriction along, South Pennsylvania Avenue between Philadelphia and Post Road. Any exit off of Route 1, off the Route 1 ramps, make a right turn onto West Philadelphia Avenue and go south towards Tyburn Road. Separate it, interchange to get on Tyburn Road and then get on the South Pennsylvania Avenue that way. Exiting the site, left turn out from South Pennsylvania Avenue and make a right onto Tyburn Road to get back to Route 13.
So, Mr. Chairman, we also sent a letter, I included it in your package, dated September 17th to Morrisville Borough, where we outlined their concerns and then we identified six items that we would do to work with them to restrict the traffic. And one of which is that we would agree to complete for the borough at our cost this classification study that's needed in order for the borough to make application for an ordinance to restrict truck trucks to a certain tonnage on that stretch of roadway. In addition to all the signage that we've agreed, we did receive back an email that I included as well in the package from Mr. Mitchell, the borough manager, confirming that our summary reflects the conversation and thanking us for the follow-up. He said, "We appreciate the developer and the project team hearing us out and taking our concerns seriously." So yes, there's, there's his email back following our letter summarizing everything we agreed to do. And Samuel, who's on the phone, is committed to working with the borough. They're the, they're the ones that would be impacted by truck traffic and confirming that we're going to do so in a manner that improves the situation that's out there now. I think you're on mute, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sorry about that. Still not used to this thing. We'll take questions from board members. Mr. Rocco, you have any questions or comments?
No, I'll save, well, I'll save it for the land development. But, this text amendment, I know I've been on the board for quite a few years. We, we have done one. It's basically giving them the ability to construct this just on their property.
So this is, you know, obviously this is an application from a prospective developer. But this would affect any property in the RD1 district that meets the parameters set forth in the ordinance.
And, and Mr. Rocco, just to add in, I've been with the township for 19 years and this is the first text amendment we, we have ever done. This is essentially when there is a piece of property that there is a contemplated new use that was not contemplated when the property was originally developed, that instead of having the developer go in and have to ask for a whole list of variances in front of the zoning hearing board, that sometimes it makes more sense if it's a use that the township thinks is a beneficial use on a piece of property to do it by a text amendment, which allows them to have this as a by right use. They still have to go through land development. We're still going to see what the building looks like. We're still going to see all the things we would normally see about stormwater and things along those lines. But this just is a way of expediting a process on, as you know, a piece of property that the township has wanted to see developed for the last 15 years.
Okay, appreciate the info. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer, any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Boraski?
No, thank you.
All right, I have none. Any other professionals have any questions or comments? I guess no. Do we have any board, public comment, Kyle?
No comment.
All right, so we heard what they're planning on doing. So they put some effort into how they're going to control trucks' traffic and they've spoken with Marshmallow Borough. Is there a motion then for this text amendment?
I make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All right, a motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? No. All right, congratulations, step one.
Thank you.
Everyone.
All right, good night. Have a good night. Now, we're also going to move up item number 21, which is another land development item. Usually we keep them at the front of the agenda, but we have a hefty agenda here tonight. So item number 21 is consider authorization to advertise ordinance to amend the Falls Township zoning map to rezone a portion of the property located at 500 Lincoln Highway from SC to HC. Mr. Clark, can you take us through this? You're muted.
I'll defer to Lauren. She's been working on this.
Certainly, and I did see Julie popped in, but I, I think she has dropped off. Did we lose the applicant's attorney?
I am here. Can you see us?
So this is an application for a map amendment change for property located at 500 Lincoln Highway. This is being offered in connection with a minor subdivision plan. So this would only rezone a portion of the property. And the applicant is represented by Julie Von Spreckelson, so I will turn it over to Julie at this point.
Thank you very much, Lauren. Yes, good evening, Julie Von Spreckelson on behalf of the applicant, KA at Fairless Hills LP. Joining me here this evening, I think you can see him as well as our project engineer, that's Justin Gianotti from Dynamic Engineering. KA at Fairless Hills LP is the legal owner of the property located at 500 Lincoln Avenue, and that's at the intersection of Arlene's Avenue. And we are before you this evening for a very limited purpose, and that is to request the board to authorize advertisement of applicant zoning map amendment ordinance and to set a hearing date for consideration of that map ordinance amendment. And so I'm not going to get into a lot of detail with regard to this project just because this is a very limited purpose this evening and we're not going to have the actual hearing on the ordinance amendment this evening. But I just wanted to provide a brief overview of what the, what the project entails and why we're moving forward in this fashion. And to give you just a brief background, applicant purchased this 15 acre property back in 2014. And at the time, it contained the buildings that still exist on the site. And those are two buildings. One is a 188,458 square foot shopping center. And then there's a standalone restaurant as well. And as you may recall, the shopping center's anchor tenant was a Pathmark. But when applicants then purchased the property, just a couple of years later, Pathmark went bankrupt. And so they lost their anchor tenant. And this vacancy was followed shortly thereafter by two additional vacancies within that shopping center. So in order to attract tenants to fill these vacancies, the applicant made physical improvements to the property and then they also hired a national commercial broker to assist in filling these vacancies. Despite taking all of these steps, there's still 60,000 square feet of vacancy in the shopping center. And it took three years to fill that Pathmark vacancy. And that wasn't even with a retail use. It was with an amusement use. You may know it as the Funzilla. So this is just so showing and demonstrating the difficulty in leasing this premise and also finding retail tenants. We're now in a time where, as you're well aware, that retail stores are going by the wayside. Brick and mortar stores are closing their doors with online shopping. The pandemic certainly didn't help the situation. So shopping centers need to repurpose and they're trying to find different uses. So what this project entails is a subdivision of a portion of that 15 acre property. And it would be a 2.036 acre portion of the property right at the corner of Arlene's and Lincoln. And the rezoning of that portion of the property from SC to HC, so commercial to commercial, so it's staying still commercial. And then the construction of a Wawa convenience store with fuel. And the hope is that it will help to boost the viability of the shopping center and attract additional tenants to that shopping center that really needs to fulfill those spaces. We did meet with the township staff with regard to this project. And then we also proceeded to the planning commission where we reviewed both our minor subdivision application as well as our ordinance amendment. And the planning commission after review recommended approval of both. So we want to continue to move forward. This again, much like what Mr. Gunlock had said on his, on his previous application, this is the very first step in this process. So we need to get to a hearing on the ordinance amendment request. We also have to go through the minor subdivision eventually to zoning and then to land development along with a conditional use. So there's a number of steps that we need to proceed forward with. And so tonight, again, we're just asking and requesting that limited relief. And that is for you to authorize advertisement of our ordinance amendment and to hold a hearing on the ordinance amendment.
All right, thank you. So basically, this is the corner where Erosso is now. Erosso is going away and moving into the shopping center. We're going to rezone this area so that they could potentially have a Wawa in that corner. We're not approving any Wawa tonight or anything like that. All we're doing is advertising this change, correct, Ms. Gallagher?
Yeah, so this will just, this is just authorizing advertising this evening. So this will come back at the October meeting if the board is so inclined.
Is there any questions from board members? Mr. Rocco?
None.
Mr. Galloway?
None.
Mr. Palmer? Mr. Palmer?
None.
Mr. Baraski?
Just one. Ms. Gallagher, I know this, you know, we were discussing this right now. You know, Mr. Dent was pretty clear, but I just wanted just to understand that, you know, a yes vote to advertise this doesn't dictate or lock us and lock myself in any vote having to do with a Wawa in that intersection.
Absolutely. This is just authorization to advertise for the consideration of a map amendment request. So this does not lock any, any board members or the township into any action with, with regard to any step in that process.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from any of the professionals? Mr. Jones?
No questions.
Mr. Tequita?
No questions.
All right, Kyle, is there any public comment needed?
Yes, we have one.
All right. Who is that?
This is Tony again.
All right, go ahead, Tony.
Hey, Tony Sarsik. There you go.
Just did. Okay. Just for information, what is, what is the definition of SC and HC?
SC would be shopping center and HC would be highway commercial.
Highway commercial, okay. Under highway commercial, are gas pumps allowed?
Yes.
I believe they're permitted by conditional use in that district.
Okay, thank you. That was all I wanted to know.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment needed? Kyle?
No further comments.
All right, I guess that's it. Do we have a motion then to approve or deny?
So moved.
Yeah, I'll second that.
A motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those? None. All right, that was easy. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item number seven. We're going to get back in order now, is a employment agreement between Falls Township and Lieutenant Todd Plutnik. We've had up until September 1st, three lieutenants. They haven't, or two of them haven't had a contract since 2017, a new one. They've been working under their old one. Their contracts basically mirror the pay off contract. And because there wasn't a pay off contract, you know, their contract didn't really change. Long story short, I guess is, um, this new agreement between Falls and Lieutenant Plutnik gives him the same retroactive pay he would have gotten mirroring the pay off contract to 2017. And the only difference that he would get would be the post-retirement for life. And Mr. Lieutenant Plutnik is retiring this year. So he only has a few months left. His last day of work is actually October 8th of this year. That'll be before our next meeting. Is that about, does that summarize everything right, Ms. Gallagher?
That's correct.
I don't, this is another one. I don't recall us doing these contracts in a public meeting before, but any questions from board members? Mr. Rocco?
Aye, none.
Mr. Palmer?
Uh, none.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
And Mr. Baraski?
No questions.
And I have no questions. Is there a motion to approve Lieutenant Plutnik's contract?
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Galloway, or Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board, please?
Yes, Brian Galloway.
Yes.
Tom Palmer?
Yes.
Jeff Baraski?
Yes.
Jeff Dent?
Yes.
No, me, yes.
All right, there you go. That's approved. But I keep going out of order because every time we have people added to our screen, and then when they leave, everybody else has moved around again. So one time I look and I can't find anyone at first. Item number eight is an employment agreement between Falls Township and Chief Nelson Whitney. And Chief Whitney is with us tonight. Same thing. This is, he's under our new police chief. Chief Wilcox retired and Chief Whitney stepped up, so this is his contract as well. Do we need to go into any other detail, Ms. Gallagher?
No, the township is entering into it an agreement with, with Chief Whitney, and the agreement speaks for itself. It's a, you've given enough of a summary if you're, if you're comfortable voting on that.
All right, is there any questions from board members? Mr. Rocco? Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Baraski?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
All right, is there a motion to approve Chief Whitney's contracts?
I make that motion.
All right, Mr. Palmer, can you pull the board, please? I mean, Mr. Rocco. I apologize again.
Yeah, Brian Galloway.
Yes.
Jeff Baraski?
Yes.
Jeff Dent?
Yes.
Tom Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
All right, another easy one. Number nine is a scratch. Number 10 is a consider stipulations to settle an appeal of Fair Sand Company LLC tax parcel. This is something that we discussed last meeting. I think we advertised this last meeting. This was between Pensbury School District. And whatever this company is over their assessment, I assume. It's pretty straightforward. It didn't involve Falls Township. I'm not even sure why we have to approve it. Any questions or comments from board members, Mr. Rocco?
I have none.
Baraski?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
None.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
All right, again, this is straightforward. This was handled by Cliff Bidley Meyer, but he, you know, I told him he didn't need to be here tonight because it was so straightforward. Is there a motion to approve this?
I make the motion to approve it.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those? All right. Item 11, consider proposal for MCS Technology Solutions. This is a data retrieval company that's helping us out. Mr. Tequita, can you give us a brief explanation of what they do exactly?
This company will provide email collection and data, data hosting for the township for all emails that we have and are generating.
Okay. Um, and is there a price for this?
It's $20,550.
Right. Any questions from board members? Mr. Rocco? Mr. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Baraski?
No questions.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
All right. Is that, is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board, please?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
No, me, yes.
Yes. All right, item number 12, consider quotes for the purchase of playground equipment for the Mill Creek Manor Park. Another new playground. This is something we budgeted for last year, Mr. Tequita, correct?
That's correct.
All right, and the total price is $59,850, is that correct?
Yes, there are four, there are four quotes. The the one, the lowest quote is $59,850.
And we have pictures here. It looks nice. Any questions or comments from board members? Mr. Baraski?
I do not, but Mr. Andrews, just before you get off, can you talk about the other playground real quick that we were texting about? Bummer done here. I just wanted to catch it before, before you logged off.
As far as Kirby Park, yes. The Kirby Park's the new playground we put in this year as part of our, it's our first playground in our 2020 replacement program that we recommended last year. We are getting the new swing set put in next week. So once that swing set goes in, we're going to tighten everything up and do the final audits and that thing will finally be open. There was a little snafu of where the exit to the slide was compared to the swing set. We were out of compliance, but the manufacturer and the installer have agreed to do it at no, no extra cost to the township, so that's moving forward. So that was the first playground, one of our oldest ones that we were replacing. It's a really nice unit. I think it's going to be a great addition to that area. This unit we're talking about tonight, we were doing official audits and inspections of the playgrounds. This unit was deemed to be very unsafe. And the decision was, was immediately to remove it because there was, there was some really serious problems with it. Strangulation hazards. The bolts wouldn't hold on, nothing would line up. You know, just something we couldn't expose any children to. So the decision was to remove it and in due diligence, this was the next playground I was going to recommend replacement on anyway. It wasn't one of our better ones, so kind of speeding it up a little bit here. So we got the four quotes and, you know, you're considering that tonight, and I think it's a nice unit. And we're going to be saving 40% on this. There's a grant opportunity with this company similar to what we did at Kirby. And I think it's a nice unit. I think it'll fit in great there at that site.
Brian, where, where is it at?
Lynn Avenue, you know, across from the main park entrance, right across the street, Lynn Avenue is a little cut through right behind where Village of Pembroke is. It's right back in that little cut through.
Thank you.
Brian, the warranty work for years out after construction, is this, what kind of warranty does it have with it? Is it a full 12-year, 15-year warranty?
Yeah, a lot, mostly like limited, limited warranties, which this, this group here, which is a selling point, you know, I was talking with the guy. For example, a slide. Sometimes we get cracks in our slides. We have to replace them on some of our older units, very costly. If we have a 15-year warranty on the slide, say the slide cracks at 14 years, 363 days, we get a new slide for nothing. What we've been doing on these older playgrounds, which is one of the reasons we want to replace these older playgrounds, the, these repairs are expensive. We can't get parts for these older playgrounds. So the idea of upgrading, going newer and getting something with a good warranty like this going forward, it's going to save us a lot of money. And this also has a UV protection fade. You know, a lot of these units fade in color. I don't know if you've seen playgrounds, they start out bright red, they become a pink after several years. They're claiming theirs doesn't. So I thought that was a nice feature to it, and I, I think they're worth a shot here. I think the warranty is probably better than we've seen on the other units so far.
And Mr. Dent, we would just recommend that any motion on this, this item is just contingent on the final confirmation from the solicitor's office.
All right, any other questions, Mr. Galloway? You're good?
I'll just get it done.
All right. So we have a quote here for, now the 40,000, the 40%, you said, was the grant, is that off of the 59,000 or is that included in that price?
Yeah, that's, basically you're saving about 20 grand. This would cost us probably about 78 grand. So yeah, you're saving that.
All right, so we have a price of $59,850, which was budgeted for. Is there a motion?
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, a motion made and seconded to purchase this playground. Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board, please?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Uh, Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
No, me, yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Brian, thanks for the update on that part.
No problem. Have a good one.
All right, item 13, consider purchase of vests for the police department. This is pretty easy and straightforward as well. Chief Whitney's here, if we have any questions. What do we have? Any vests are we buying here, Chief Whitney?
Buying 11. We have 11 officers on our special response team. These are the vests that are, have superior ballistic integrity. Basically, they stop rifle rounds. So they're different than what we typically wear in patrol on the street, and they're up for replacement.
All right, pretty straightforward. Any questions for a miss, for Chief Whitney?
I, I have one, but it's probably more for Mike, the solicitor. If we change vests for officers, are we exposing ourselves to liability if we give certain officers better vests than other officers?
You're muted, Mike.
Oh, gosh. No, because I am certain that the standard vests that all of our officers have are meet all of the specifications and are rated in such a way that they're, they're high-quality vests. I think as Chief Whitney has just indicated, these are going to certain officers who are in a different detail because they may be in a situation where they need sort of a higher level of vest. It doesn't mean we're giving them the good ones and everyone else the bad ones. It means everyone, everyone gets the good ones and these guys are getting just a little, little higher level vest.
For their use.
For the, yeah. For a specific purpose.
Thank you.
Yes, and they only use them on activations, so these officers would not be wearing these vests on patrol. The vests are very heavy and very cumbersome. They're, they're difficult to wear. But they're required for the operations that they engage in.
Again, Mr. Dent, we would just recommend that if the board is inclined to approve this tonight, just be contingent on the final review from the solicitor's office.
You got it. Any other questions, Mr. Rocco and Mr. Galloway?
Whoa, no questions.
No questions.
Baraski?
No, nothing. Chief, it's just crazy when you talk about, you know, vests for stopping the rifle rounds, you know, it's a, it's a wild world and, and it's kind of even wilder. There's a product, and amazing, there's a product for that.
Yeah, they're similar to the vests that the military uses, and it's a, it's a crazy world out there.
All right, so we have a proposal here for $25,058. Is there a motion?
Mr. Dent, make a public comment.
I'm sorry. Do we have public comment, Kyle?
Yeah, we have one public comment on this.
All right, I apologize. Is there a motion to open public comment?
I'm moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Do we have, Kyle?
This is Tony again. She's coming in now.
Hi. Yes, our officers certainly need to be well-prepared when they're out in the public, especially with everything that's going on, but I would also like to ensure that the K-9 officers are also just as well-covered. So do they all have vests?
You mean the canines themselves?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, they do.
Okay, thank you.
That's it? Any other public comment, Kyle?
No more further public comment.
All right, motion to close public comment.
So moved.
All right. So we have a proposal for $25,058 provided to this. Is there a motion?
I make that motion.
Second it.
All right, Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
No, me, yes.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Item 14, consider proposals from the Bucks County Consortium regarding the purchase of rock salt for 2020 through 2021. Mr. Tequita?
Yes, the board is being asked to consider awarding the consortium bid for 2020, 2021 salt to Morton Salt at $47.75 a ton delivered.
They deliver it?
Correct.
I think in the past, we actually had to go down there and get it, didn't we?
Yeah, the price, the price difference between those, the, the price difference between delivered and picking up would, we would actually end up, it would be more expensive if we did, the cost of fuel, going back and forth and the number of trips.
All right, this is pretty straightforward. We do this every year. Any questions for Mr. Tequita, Mr. Rocco?
Yeah, none.
None.
Mr. Baraski?
Nothing.
Palmer?
None.
Galloway?
None.
Hopefully we don't need any of this salt and we get to use it again in 2022. Is there a motion to join this consortium?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board?
Galloway?
Yes.
Yes, that was to me. I didn't hear you.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
No, me, yes.
All right, item 15, 16, and 17. Are we going to do all these separately or do we have to do these together? For the pension plan, for the
You can, you can discuss them together, but you should take separate votes on all three of them.
All right, so this is pretty straightforward as well. Is there any questions about this, on the pension?
No questions.
None.
None.
All right, can we vote on item number 15 for the police pension plan? All right, can we vote on item number fifteen for the police pension plan? Is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Second.
Second, and Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board?
Yes, Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
All right, item sixteen will be the same thing for the non-uniform police pension.
Yeah, Mr. Dents, just to let you know, the, these are resolutions.
These are resolutions.
Yes.
I apologize.
That would have been twenty, twenty?
Twenty-six would have been the last one?
Correct. The, the one you just approved is resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-six. The next resolution for item number sixteen is resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-seven.
And then twenty-eight will come after that?
Correct.
All right. So we'll, we'll do this again. We'll vote on resolution twenty twenty-six. Is there a motion?
I make that motion.
Second.
All right. Mr. Rocco?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
All right, I apologize. Um, resolution twenty twenty-seven would be for the non-uniform pension plan. Is there a motion?
I make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Rocco?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
All right, and item seventeen would be the same thing again, item, uh, resolution twenty twenty-eight for the Public Works Pension Plan. Is there a motion?
I make that motion.
Tagging.
Mr. Rocco?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
All right. Item eighteen, consider authorization for advertisement for audit of the twenty twenty financial records. It's another routine thing we do every year. Ms. Gallagher, can you, or Miss Rucoff, Mrs. Rucoff is here for this. Can I give us a quick explanation?
Sure. Um, this is something that we do every year. Basically, we just, when we need authorization to advertise that we will be using an outside firm of CPAs to audit the financial records of the township in place of a board of auditors.
Any questions from the board members? Mr. Rocco?
No, this is routine, yeah.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Brasky?
No questions.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
I have no questions. Is there a motion to approve advertising?
I make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nineteen, we already, we changed that one out. Item number, what's that?
Uh, nothing.
Item twenty, consider master agreement for casting adjustments between the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Department of Transportation and Falls Township. Can someone take us through this?
Certainly. Uh, this would be every ten years, Penn Dot circulates this agreement for renewal. The township has entered into this agreement before. Essentially what it is, is when Penn Dot is performing road work or road maintenance work within the township. They are allowing the township to essentially piggyback on its contracts with its, its contractors to do some repair work to any utilities that the township would have in the roadway. Primarily that's going to be stormwater facilities in the township. Um, and the, there is a notification process for any individual road that's going to be done. So that way the township could decide as the projects come up, whether or not it wants to participate in that and have the castings for its utilities replaced. Um, so this is a fairly routine agreement with Penn Dot that allows the township to take advantage of the competitive bidding process that Penn Dot has already gone through in order to repair some of its castings in the roadways.
All right. But we're not spending any money tonight, correct?
Not spending any money. There is a resolution that would authorize Mr. Tequita to enter into the agreement on behalf of the township.
All right, that would be resolution twenty twenty-nine?
Yes.
Okay. I don't even see the resolution, but that's fine. Oh, yes, I do. All right, any questions for board members? Mr. Rocco?
Have you ever taken advantage of this prior agreement?
Um, that I would need to defer to the traffic engineer on that. I'm not sure. It's not something that we would have used frequently. Um, this is more often used by water and sewer utilities. But we do have storm, stormwater facilities in the, in the roadways. Um, Mr. Jones, you know how often we've, we've used this type of agreement in the past?
Uh, Ms. Gallagher, I can tell you that most of the road program work that we do is not in Penn Dot right of ways. And so all of our work is on private roads. So I do not have any experience with this program.
We know if TOFA has the, has been given the opportunity to piggyback onto this.
Um, I believe that they have. Like I said, Penn Dot sent this to a very long list of municipalities throughout the state. I can reach out and find out whether TOFA specifically was on there.
Yeah, if you could. Anyone's going to take advantage, it'd be them, it sounds like.
Any other questions? Mr. Brasky?
No, thank you.
Mr. Galloway?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
All right. This is resolution twenty, that's twenty-eight?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. All right, is there a motion?
I make that motion. I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Rocco?
Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
All right. Thank you. So item twenty-three as well. Done earlier. Item twenty-two, consider authorization to advertise an ordinance to amend the Falls Township Code at chapter two oh three. Vehicles and traffic parking regulation. This is along Wolston Drive, not far from Makefield. We believe that at one time there was no parking there and somehow earlier this year, all of a sudden cars started parking along this road again. Is that correct, Chief Whitney?
Yeah, right about when the pandemic kicked off. I don't know if it was because everybody was staying home. But people started parking there. We've probably got somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty complaints from residents and one of my officers about the visibility problem it caused for people turning left from Makefield Road onto Wolston Drive uh, to go towards West Trenton Avenue. Uh, it is a tough turn to make. And with the, with the cars there, especially these people or parking trucks there. Uh, it, it got to the point where there was going to be a tragedy. So we put up temporary parkings, no parking signs. Uh, we wrote some tickets, we notified the office and I drove by there today and there was nobody parked there at all. So I, I think the signs are going to be very effective. Uh, and I think it's for everybody's safety that we do that.
Right. Thank you. Any questions from board members, Mr. Rocco? All right. So this will be ordinance, what ordinance number is this? Is this a resolution number or this is different?
This is just, this is just authorization to advertise.
Okay.
So we'll be back in front of you next month.
What's that?
It'll be back in front of you next month.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I make that motion.
I'll second. I'll second.
Sorry, I was muted.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded. Um, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Item twenty-three is the minutes from August seventeenth. Any questions or comments or corrections? Excellent minutes as always, Mrs. Pullen. None? Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
I make that motion.
Second it.
Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
You were muted, Mr. Rocco. I didn't hear what you said.
I was abstaining. I was not at the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. That takes us to item number twenty-four, the engineer's report. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You will see before you the engineer's report for the month of August, twenty twenty. You'll see that we had four earth disturbance submissions made in August and one cell tower application, general review. Um, the land development issues, I, all the updates are identified and read as usual. Um, the land developments, we heard from most of them tonight at the bottom of the list. WG Lincoln Properties is back under construction. I mean, the JR Truck Smart project will be before the board next month for land development approval. Um, the earth disturbances, I'll make it brief. Everything on the right side pools, the piles island wetland mitigation are either all complete or under construction with the exception of item number thirty-four. That residential pool needed a zoning variance and so they're on hold for a bit for that. In terms of the ongoing township projects, uh, we will be watching the weather now. Um, this isn't identified and read. I apologize for that, for the removal of the docks um, at the Quaker Penn Park. The two thousand and nineteen road program is substantially complete. Um, there's a, there's a payout in the manager's report tonight. It's not the final payout and we are working with the contractor to replace all the sod that didn't make it through the summer. Um, so that all will be replaced along with top dressing and raking out any undesired material in the topsoil. Um, the two thousand and twenty road program is underway down in the Hedrow Wood section. Simons and Gilbert Storm Sewers are being installed. They're about ninety percent complete. And the contractor is setting up for concrete curbs on Gilbert. The residents have received their widening letters, so there's some apron widenings in play with that. Um, we are on schedule, according to the last time I spoke with the contractor, to be subs, well, not complete, but mostly complete by the end of this year. Uh, we'll probably be doing landscaping in the spring of next year. We will be working in the Burgess Manor section early October and the mill and overlay portion of the project will happen before the Thanksgiving Day holiday. Terms of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three road program, that is at various stages of preliminary design ongoing. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Jones, Mr. Barasky?
No, thank you. Not at this time.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Rocco?
Great summary. Thank you.
My, my one comment's going to be to what Mrs. Batiste said earlier. I was under the impression Folsington Davis canceled, but maybe it's not. What's that?
I was under the same.
Yeah, um, we'll make sure that they're not going to be working on the curbs while that's going on, right?
Yes, sir. We'll make sure it's after that day regardless.
Okay. And, um, that's all I have.
That's a pretty big gathering.
What's that?
Folsington Day is a pretty big gathering. I highly doubt they're having it.
Yeah. So is there a motion to approve the engineer's report?
Uh, salute.
Second.
All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yep, thank you.
That takes us to item number twenty-five, our bill list. We have the bill list and the amount of two million four hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. Almost one point six five of that is payroll. Any questions or comments on the bill list? Mr. Brasky?
No, no, thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Rocco?
None.
Uh, is there a motion to pay the bills?
So muted.
Tagging.
All right, Mr. Rocco?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
All right, we have two executive sessions to comment on. Mr. Clark, one from September eighth and one from tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Dents. On September eighth, uh, the board held an executive session with a, uh, one of its consultants. It was for informational purposes only. Uh, no decisions were made and no deliberations occurred. Uh, earlier this evening before this meeting, the board held an executive session. Uh, it met with the finance director. Again, it was for informational purposes only. Uh, no decisions were made and no deliberations occurred. The board also discussed during the executive session earlier this evening, uh, several personnel matters.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clark. That takes us to Chief Whitney's first ever police department report. Saw you, chief.
You very much. Um, so I'm going to share my screen. My wife used to call me lieutenant PowerPoint, so I guess I'm now chief PowerPoint, but I like to, uh, I like to utilize that as a way to communicate. So, um, to start this off, we usually, I usually look back to the month before, so we're in September, so I look back at August. Just so you guys know, in August, thirty-two out of the sixty-two shifts worked in the patrol division. Uh, we were at, uh, or below minimum staffing for at least part of the shift. That was fifty-two percent of the time in August. Uh, it was down one percentage point from July. And then if you look back at twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen and twenty seventeen, you, you can kind of see that this time of year due to vacations, we typically run somewhere between forty and fifty percent or so at minimum staffing. Uh, in twenty sixteen, we were at eighty-four percent of the time. We had a different deployment then. Uh, in fact, that's why we changed the deployment after that year. We used to run, we had six officers assigned to a three to three shift. That just wasn't sustainable. It was impacting operations, uh, and driving us to crazy high levels of being at minimum staffing. When we're at minimum staffing, our ability to respond to calls and be proactive is impacted. That's a breakdown just to the summertime months. So you can see group A day shift, every, every shift in August was at or below min staffing. The breakdown for the rest of them.
How, how, how do we change that?
Uh, you know, it's all about getting people on the road. You know, that's why, you know, I've had a big push to try to put some of the officers, the sworn officers that were assigned to inside duties and put them back on the street. I think going forward in our police department, if you carry a badge, you're either a patrol cop or a detective. Uh, you, you know, we've got to support our, our mission. Uh, the patrol division is out there. They're the people that are going to come to your house if you need help. Uh, so getting above minimum staffing is important. So once we get our deployment to the point where we have everybody on the road, then we can look at how effective that is and, and, and do we have enough people? Uh, but I think we can't even get to the question of whether or not we have enough people until we use the people we have as efficiently as possible.
Yeah, and, and are we being too lenient with granting vacations during that month? How does that work?
You know, by the collective bargaining agreement, two people can get off at any given time. Uh, and that's been the same way, you know, the entire time I've been here. So they have to compete for those vacations and, you know, if you're a senior person, you're going to get vacations in the summertime. If you're, you know, less than seniority, you're, you're not getting off. I, it probably took me eight years to take, you know, time off in the summertime when I got hired. But, um, so it's not really a vacation thing. I, I think in this instance in August, uh, we had some COVID mandatory quarantines because some people, uh, went to areas that were on the governor's list. So they had to be quarantined and tested before they could safely return to the workforce. That did contribute to it. And that's, like I said, that's something we look at every month at staff meetings. Uh, and it's something that, you know, going forward, we try to make appropriate changes to, to efficiently use our people and not have really high levels of min staffing. So our, our, our goals are to be above minimum staffing and be proactive in traffic and drug enforcement. Uh, traffic crashes and drug overdoses are the two things that routinely kill people in our township. So for us to be proactive at those, I think is a minimum standard. Our specific objective is to be at minimum staffing no more than twenty-five percent of the time. There have been times that we've achieved that objective. Uh, we haven't achieved it for a sustained period of a year, but there have been months where we've hit that objective. So that's something that we always talk about, try to keep in mind. Uh, we look at overdoses every month. So we had nine overdoses in August. We've had a couple since then. Our year to date, uh, by the end of August was eighty-six. If you look down there near the bottom or at the bottom, we track our fatal overdoses. So, you know, losing anybody, uh, i- is a horrible tragedy to a drug overdose. But if you look at our stats since twenty-ten, you can really see the heroin epidemic peak in, in Falls Township and it was like this all across the United States. Our peak year for fatalities was twenty sixteen where we lost twenty-five people that year to drug overdoses. We're on track to keep that number really low this year. If it stays in single digits, uh, it's been years since we've seen that. Uh, of course, we hope that we will. Uh, I'd like to say this is all us running to save people with naloxone. Naloxone has definitely helped. Uh, we've had it since twenty fifteen and it has definitely saved a lot of people. Um, but this is really, uh, the cycle of a, of a heroin epidemic. This isn't the first, you know, opioid epidemic. But this is really the cycle of a heroin epidemic. This isn't the first, you know, opioid epidemic to hit the United States. I think it's the fourth. It usually follows the release of some new opioid drug. As it did here. And people's, you know, when people are struggling with substance abuse, their drug of choice will change over time. And what we're seeing now is that the drug of choice is changing and shifting from heroin to methamphetamine. There's a lot. Of concern regarding that heroin sedates people. So although we've had this this health crisis and these people that have needed our help. What we really haven't seen with heroin is that people want to fight with us. But when people use methamphetamine and cocaine. It really impacts their thinking. It leads to things like excited delirium. It makes people want to fight. So, you know, going forward. The downside to the shift in the drug of choice is going to, you're going to see more use of force incidents. And we're going to see people that that are violent towards each other and violent towards us. So that's something that we know is coming and, you know, we try to prepare for that with training. This year so far, we've administered forty three doses of naloxone to people who were experiencing opioid overdoses. We've also referred fifty two people in our STOP program for treatment. So you might say, what's the STOP program? Well, we've been doing this for years. We've changed the name over time. Stop is kind of our brand for substance treatment option program. When we meet somebody, we go to a non fatal overdose. When we have contact with someone who gets arrested in a drug situation and it's clear they have a substance abuse problem. We'll refer them, we outsource them to this. Organization that will place them. So it doesn't cost us anything. They even print the forms we use. It doesn't cost us any administrative time. So for us, it was it was a no brainer. It's kind of like our mobile crisis program that helps people struggling with mental illness. This is a program that helps us refer people to treatment. It's up to them. They don't have to do it. But at least we're not just documenting the suffering. We're actually trying to create better outcomes on that that call for service when we deal with people struggling with substance abuse. We're also, this is a new thing for us, that Matt Weintraub has been pushing to make countywide. It's called the B pair program. It's Bucks County Police Assisting in Recovery. That used to be Ben Salem Police Assisting in Recovery. Fred Heran kind of invented this in Ben Salem and got it rolling. It's new for us. We put the policy out. We're going to roll it out to the public as soon as our officers finish the training. There's an online training that everybody is going to complete. And basically what this means is if somebody comes to headquarters or has contact with an officer. And says, I want treatment and hands over whatever drugs or whatever paraphernalia paraphernalia they have. We agree not to charge them. And we'll call, they call them navigators. We call somebody from the community to volunteer in to help place them. So, you know, it's a program where basically they can come into headquarters and seek help. It makes headquarters a safe haven for somebody who wants help. So that's a new program for us. Moving on, these are our calls for service across the summertime. So the top number is the total calls for service per month. This dropped really low at the beginning of COVID. But it's gone way back up. That didn't last long. So we break it down by our patrol sectors. We we count year to date. So we're we're in the twelve thousands now here the third week in in September. That that call volume is lower because of COVID than it used to be. We also count medical calls. Every year, medical calls are our most frequent call for service. That's one of the driving factors behind our EMT program. We also count traffic crashes. And this this is an interesting trend. Typically, if you look back over the last five years, you know, in patrol. We typically get between a hundred and a hundred and twenty crashes per month. We've been consistently hovering lower than that, somewhere between seventy and eighty. I think it's because people are working from home. That's my only guess. I have to talk to Pendot. Traffic volume must be down. These these numbers are very unusual. And we had an additional fatality since the two fatal crashes that were listed there that happened on September seventeenth. That's the man who was up on US one at night riding a bike. We have been contacted by the attorney representing the driver and we're arranging for that driver to come to headquarters. So that case is moving forward. But it's a very dark highway at night and people travel at tremendous speed up there. So it's certainly a shame that poor man was killed. These are arrest numbers. So at the top are all of them. And then we break it down into summary arrests, which are non traffic citations. We look at the metrics for juvenile arrests. Drug arrests pending arrest is when sometimes you have to send out chemical testing before you can file charges. So even in the, you know, middle of the pandemic here, middle of the first wave of this thing, we're still arresting a lot of people. We also look at our seven hotels and one motel or rather four motels. To see what kind of calls for service we're getting. COVID drove the rates of all of our hotels in the basement. They booked through third party booking apps like booking dot com. And you can get a room at the Residence Inn cheaper than you can get a room at the Ace Motel on Lincoln Highway. So that has created some unique problems. And we've been working with the management in these hotels to kind of make suggestions. And come up with strategies to try to help them deal with this. That that's one of the contributing factors to that homicide we had at the Holiday and Express earlier this year. That was just due to people who normally wouldn't have been there. It wasn't sesame traffic. It was, you know, people coming over here and engaging in criminal activity. You can see the red roof is the line leader here. This time of year, we always look and update our analysis of our arrest data for criminal offenses. And how that compares to the demographics of Falls Township. So this is from two thousand and ten to August of two thousand and twenty. If you look at the census, Falls Township is eighty two point four percent white and eighty one percent of the people we arrest are white. You know, it's never perfect. If it was perfect, you suspect somebody was cooking the books. But our arrest data indicate that we don't have any issue with bias based policing. A couple of major cases. So on the eighth, we had that shooting at North Olds and Lincoln. The man who was shot did survive and it's currently under investigation. It was actually a shootout. He fired shots before he was at. Another shooting with no hit. This man, LaShawn Turner, fired a shot at his girlfriend during an argument. We have pending charges against him. We have a warrant for attempted homicide. He still remains a fugitive. And you guys know about our pursuit, motorcycle pursuit ended up in a crash, seriously injuring Jeff Redunda. He's home now and that case is still being investigated. That's another thing we've seen an uptick in lately. I think August into September, we've had five or six pursuits. We had one Sunday. When I was coming home from training.
I just just interrupt real quick. I just read an article on NJ dot com, the state police in New Jersey where we're kind of reporting the same thing. There was an uptick in in highway pursuits.
Yeah, I think it's a number of things. I think people are stressed. I think, you know, some of these people that we're chasing are engaging in criminal activity. I think, you know, there's an anti law enforcement sentiment out there. I think there are a lot of factors that are that are combining here to create that. And I don't think it's a coincidence that the drug of choice is becoming a stimulant. You know, if you look at our stats back in the eighties and nineties when crack cocaine was the drug of choice, we had a lot of traffic pursuits. They happened all the time. It was incredibly dangerous. I think that's just another indication of the drug culture shifting to a stimulant. Just so you guys know, we have been working with the grant writer that township hired. They've been fantastic. We have a grant application out there to purchase a Haas alert system for our fleet and the fire marshal's vehicles. This kind of takes warning to the next level. It's a system where you put a transmitter in the car. And it actually will notify the navigation systems and the and the WAS app or Waze app. That an emergency vehicle is approaching or in the area. So in addition to using sound, you know, your siren and using warning lights, this will actually talk to the nav system and vehicles. I hope we get this. We'd be the first in the region to to get this system. I think it's a great idea. It's a little expensive. It's, you know, almost forty six thousand dollars, but it would be a wonderful thing to increase everybody's safety on the street. And we have another grant application. We've been incrementally issuing ballistic helmets to to the patrol division. This is, you know, one of the ways to prepare for an active shooter incident. I hope we never have one. But we would want our people to be properly protected. So we're trying to get ten more. And the high visibility vests are the kind that you see road workers wearing. The manual and uniform traffic control devices requires us to wear these when performing some traffic incident management functions on roadways. So we need to buy them for everybody. So we put in a grant application for that as well. We've been engaging in this, these programs that Matt Weintraub kind of has been encouraging everybody to be involved in. I was involved in one with our sergeants. Last month, I'm doing one again with our corporals on Thursday this week. And we'll open it up to, you know, EMTs and field training and the rest of the department so that everybody can get involved. And basically, you watch this hour long documentary. About racism and the community relationships with the police. And then you break out into groups that are mediated by mediators from the peace center. And you just talk about how you felt about the film and it generates a conversation about relationships with the police and the community. So I think it's an important thing for us to be out in front of this and be involved in this discussion. So we're going to stay involved in these as long as they keep having them. We'll have people participate in them. And lastly. We have a promotional opportunity here for two officers. So we conducted a promotional exam for supervisory positions last year in the police department. The collective bargaining agreement kind of controls how this works. So the list is active for a period of two years. We currently have a vacancy for a sergeant. Everybody on the list. Is a valuable member of the department. They're doing a good job. They all contribute to the mission. You know, it's hard to pick people to promote. But, you know, I try to pick the people that I think will succeed at this job right now. The other officers can also succeed at some point in the future. In this case, I've recommended Corporal Mike Callahan to be promoted to sergeant. He said he has twelve years with us. If you take my recommendation to promote him to sergeant, it creates a corporal opening. So I've recommended Officer Matt Colleen be promoted to corporal. Matt has been with us for eleven years. And that concludes. My PowerPoint. And that's my presentation.
Excellent. That's a great first chief's report.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark, do we have to take action tonight? Are we voting on these promotions? Is that what we should do?
I think Chief Whitney is expecting that you will vote on these tonight and you can. You're not required to.
Be a regular.
But you, right, it would be a motion to appoint Corporal Callahan or promote Corporal Callahan to the position of sergeant. And then if there's that's in the affirmative, then Officer Colleen to the position of corporal.
All right, we'll start with any questions or comments on the police report from Chief Whitney, Mr. Rocco.
No, excellent information. Appreciate you sharing.
Mr. Palmer?
Oh, good.
Mr. Boraski?
No comments. Great job, chief. Thank you.
Mr. Galloway?
No, no comments.
Okay. So is there a motion to promote Corporal Callahan to sergeant?
I make that motion to promote Corporal Callahan to sergeant.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations Sergeant Callahan. With that, is there a motion to promote Matt Colleen to corporal?
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
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 All right, there you go. Congratulations Corporal Colleen. And then
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Whitney. That takes us to item number twenty eight. It's hard to believe that we have twenty eight items on our agenda tonight. Mr. Tita, all you?
I have a couple items for you tonight. The board is being asked to consider approving a resolution to appoint Corporal Victoria Crozier as the open records officer in police matters with the, this would replace Lieutenant Platnik.
You missed a vote on that as well?
Yes.
Yes, this is going to be a resolution. So it'll be resolution two thousand and twenty
Thirty.
Thirty we are up to. And this is, I believe, this is the recommendation of Chief Whitney.
All right, is there a motion or any questions needed or comments needed? All right, is there a motion to approve resolution two thousand and twenty hyphen thirty?
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, good to go.
The board is being asked to release escrows for the following projects. Britain Industries on One Mile Lane, the amount of one hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and two, nine hundred and two dollars and seventy three cents. So letter of credit, it's release number four. Can't be components at Eighty Eight Canal Road. The amount is two thousand, two hundred and fifty five dollars and fifty six cents. Gillespie Incorporated at eleven East Steel Road. Seventy thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and sixty two cents. There are two earth disturbance escrows, one for Eileen Tarity at one fifty two Amelia Drive for eight hundred and four dollars and twenty cents. And John Beck Auto Body at nine ninety two sixty six East Tyburn Road for eight hundred and ninety seven dollars and sixty eight cents. Jones Engineering has inspected each project and the work has been completed to his satisfaction and he is recommending release of these escrows.
All right. Mr. Clark, can we just do all these at once?
You can.
All right. Any questions or comments on any of these escrow releases?
No.
No.
And we have a motion to release these escrows.
I make that motion.
Second.
All right, Mr. Rocco, pull the board.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Thank you. Lastly, I have a memo from Chief Whitney. He received a request from Pensbury School District for the donation of three older high mileage vehicles from the patrol fleet. Vehicles are two two thousand and sixteen Ford Expeditions and one two thousand and eight Ford Crown Victoria. They have donated retired police vehicles in the past and they are asking for your approval to donate these to Pensbury.
All right, any questions or comments on donating the vehicles? During motion?
I make that motion.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All right.
I have nothing else.
That's it? All right, that takes us to board comment. Mr. Rocco, any comment?
No, after, this is probably one of our longest meetings in a while and certainly the most agenda items since I've been on the board. But yeah, nice job running it, Chairman Dents.
Thank you very much. Mr. Boraski?
Same for me. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Palmer?
Real fast, you know, we, some of the work we did tonight was really good. All of it was good, but the one thing that I took notice of is, you know, over four hundred and some jobs. We were part of tonight coming in the Falls Township. So it's moving in the right direction and I'm looking forward to the future. That's all.
Galloway?
Oh, everybody have a good night.
I'm going to echo what Mr. Palmer said. Yeah, between Arrow Steel and the Sunshine Paper Company, that's two hundred permanent jobs and two hundred construction jobs, which is great. Especially the permanent jobs. I did during the meeting in the past few minutes, get an email from Tony Batiste. He says that it's her understanding that Folsington Day is going to occur. There was a meeting. It's going to be done a little different this year. Time tickets for events, social distancing, and there's not quite as many vendors and there's some food vendors. So, you know, there'll be more info to follow. I guess not because it'll be before our next meeting, but we'll make sure we'll get details and put them on the website as well as social media. We also have information on the drug disposal program. There's a drive up and drop in. This isn't going to be at our building, I don't think. But we will put the information for this October twenty fourth, ten AM to two PM. This also will be on the website and on our social media. We have the shredder event, same day, Falls Township Police. I guess it is at our building. Mr. Tegy, do you know that? The drug drop off?
The shredder is going to be in the Coen Fortuit parking lot.
Okay. And that will be the twenty-fourth from nine AM to one PM. A free event for residents and shred your old documents. There's a limit to how many you can shred. This information as well will be on the website. The twenty-twenty leaf collection schedule that starts October thirty-first, which is an odd day to start it, I think, but then November seventh and fourteenth, that may change that information as well. And then there's some bulk disposal days in early October, the seventeenth, between seven and eleven AM at the Groze landfill, and we'll put all that on the website. Like Mr. Rocco said, this was a very long meeting, and I thank everyone for their support. And with that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
I second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.